Very good. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Special Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, December 21st, 2020. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the town's cable information channel, 1301, and will also be available for viewing on the town's website at lexse.com. I'm Steve McDougall, the mayor of the Town of Lexington. This time, I'd like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Todd Cornes if he would leave us in invocation for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we do pause for a moment, and we stand before our Creator, the beginning, the end, the Alpha, the Omega, and most importantly, the God of all love, the God of all comfort, the one who comforts us in our distress so that we can comfort others with the comfort we have received. So as we all sit here tonight in this beautiful town, in this blessed place, which has been given a lot of favor by you, we're full of gratitude, and we ask for your wisdom to lead us forward so that we can engage in civil debate, engage in a path forward. And we do pray for our nation in this world as we battle with a disease that is ravaging a lot of people and a lot of funerals. We pray for that comfort for those that are mourning, those that are walking those paths. We pray that you be gracious, thankful for everything you've done for us in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Cornes. This time, if everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I will call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to report on our executive session this evening. We had one legal item on our executive session tonight. It was advice regarding town ordinance. No vote was taken. Is there a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
So moved.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second's motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into approval of minutes. Copies of the minutes from the council meeting on November 2nd, 2020 were provided to you in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections to November 2nd, 2020 council meeting minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, second's motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those minutes are approved. At this time, we will open up for public hearing. Speakers are limited to five minutes, and our communication manager is here with us tonight. He's going to run a stopwatch for us. Appreciate you being here. Thank you for that. When you start speaking, he will start the time clock. At the end of the five minutes, there will be a tone heard. That is the end of your time. If you hear the tone, please stop speaking because that is the end of your five minutes. Council wants to hear all comments from citizens. However, in the interest of time, if a previous speaker has made the same point you wish to make, it is not necessary to repeat it again. So if we could, we have a lot of people lined up to speak. We want everybody to be able to speak who wants to speak. So in light of that, please don't get up and say the same thing over and over again. Those wishing to speak will be called forward in an order that they signed in. I will call the name of the first speaker and also the name of the following speaker so that if you are located in our overflow room, you could make your way down to the conference room where we will have you lined up to speak next. Our first speaker this evening for the final reading of an ordinance requiring individuals to wear a face covering in retail establishments, Ms. Stephanie Burquist. Ms. Burquist, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, everybody. I'm Stephanie Burquist, and I'm at 522 Lightning Bug Lane in Lexington.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me. I know a lot of people want to speak. I know some of you. I don't know all of you. I'm going to keep it to five minutes. I timed it before, so I'm close. Funny fact from this morning, my husband had surgery at Lexington Medical. Everything's fine, but he did have surgery. He brought a mask, wore said mask. They would not let him wear that mask in the room. Why, do you ask? Funny thing. This just happened this morning. Too much bacteria. It's not sterile. It's not clean. Those masks capture bacteria. I thought, this is the Lord speaking to me. What a funny concept to happen the day that I come and talk to y'all. Let me be very clear. I am here in advocacy of absolutely no masks, and I really hope that all y'all are listening and haven't already have a preconceived notion. I'm here for my rights, my family's rights, my kids' rights, and anybody here in Lexington who's either too scared or doesn't know how to come up and do this. There's several things at play here. A lot of people are going to be talking facts, so I'm going to try not to talk facts, like what you were saying. We've got common sense at play, factual information, civil liberties, freedoms, duties of elected public officials, and logistics. Let me ask a few questions. If these masks are working, why, after almost one year of wearing them, the lockdowns, business closures, social distancing? Why are we considering using masks again, a year later? If these masks are working, why are the numbers, although I suspect fake, soaring? It doesn't make sense. None of this makes sense. If these masks are working, why do I personally know individuals who wear masks religiously, as do all of you, who end up with COVID? Doesn't make sense. If these masks work, why the six feet? If the six feet works, why the mask? If they both work, why the lockdowns? If it all works, why the vaccine? Again, my kids and I have this conversation every day. It don't make no sense, okay? Doesn't make any sense. Again, there's going to be a lot of people talking facts, so I'm just going to talk about some civil liberties. The actual definition of civil liberty is the freedom and action of speech and protection from an unjust or interfering government. That's at any level, council level, state level, government, at any level. I don't know about you, but for me, this is a direct infringement on my civil liberties and my minor children's civil liberties, and I really won't tolerate it, to be honest with you. I don't, personally. This country was founded on the concept of a free American citizen people. We have forgotten what free is. Civil liberties are not free. We've forgotten that it takes courage of men and women of all kinds, like any of us here, to those that go to war. All Americans, including us here in Lexington, should be free to choose for ourselves, and that's what I'm here to hopefully relay to you. If people want to wear a mask, I think that's great. If people don't want to wear a mask, I think that's great. We have to be free to choose. The longer we give away our civil liberties, the harder it is to get them back. It's that simple, in my opinion. Remember, restriction of the sick is the literal definition of quarantine, if you look it up in the dictionary. The restriction of healthy is sheer tyranny, and again, I won't tolerate it. When tyranny becomes law, it is our duty as citizens of any age, any level of economic status to stand up, and that's why I'm here. Let's talk about a few facts. Fact number one, mask mandates have been enforced all over the country for almost a year, 10 months, yet the number of reported cases are rising at an astronomical rate. Doesn't make sense. Fact, the CDC has changed its stance on the virus multiple times in the last 10 months. Wear a mask. Don't wear a mask. 10 feet, 6 feet. Nobody knows. Nobody can be telling other people to do with such limited information. Fact, many of you are probably aware, there was a Town of Lexington social media survey done on December 15th. There were 301 votes cast, 172 against the mask, 111 for the mask, 18 didn't care. That's a 57% for no to the mask. I personally took it upon myself to poll my particular subdivision. There were, excuse me, 61 votes cast, 37 no, 24 yeses, which is a 61% no for the mask. There are multiple other occasions out there that I know personally that are not in favor of this. I want to talk a minute about schools. The bottom line is, I have two middle school kids. I can speak on this, okay? The school districts will slowly follow whatever we start doing at this level, any level, okay? Under our district rule currently, any student who refuses to wear a mask must attend class virtually. And I'm sorry, that is completely discriminatory and is proving to be detrimental to physical, mental, and psychological health.
Thank you very much.
Is that done?
Yep.
Two seconds. I just want to say, at the end of the day, it's all of our decisions as to when this ends and when it's not, and I really hope that y'all at least heard something that we have to say.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Minogue, and up is Charlie Spike.
Good evening. My name is Brian Minogue. I live at 377 Dragonfly Drive in Lexington, South Carolina. Moved here approximately four years ago with my wife and five children. I'm originally from New York City. I'm a retired sergeant from the New York City Police Department, and I currently help my wife as the numbers person when she performs her real estate business. I'm not going to speak about the science of the mask. What I'm going to give you is a different perspective as I see it as someone from out of state and who still has many family members who live in New York City and have been dealing with all the regulations there, too. I moved to Lexington, South Carolina because of everything that you guys are, and a lot of what you guys are is a lot of what New York City is not, or is no longer, I should say. Because as I grew up in New York City in the 70s and 80s, and I've been through the bankruptcies and the crack epidemics and the riots and pretty much anything that happened in the last 50 years there. I saw New York City go from a middle-class, go to church, barbecues, block parties, everything, into this paranoid, overbearing, stifling government monstrosity that is bankrupt, putting its businesses out of work, and it's chasing all its middle-class people away, all right? That's why I moved here. My wife's business, she single-handedly in the last four years sold nearly $20 million in real estate to mostly people from the Northeast relocating. She's one person. There are many other people in real estate doing that and much more. The reason I bring that up is because that's my approach. What you're about to partake here, one of our sales approaches, when people call us, especially moving from out of state, is I tell them, we're not so much real estate people as I'm a Northeast relocation therapist, because they have a million questions on how do things work here, because they don't know. And it's very easy for me to sell them on Lexington in particular because everything they're leaving is why I moved here, which you're about to vote on to diminish. And I find it ironic that after taking everyone around through a tour, I show them the dam, my wife shows them the shops, we have five children, we tell them about the great schools, the great people we meet here, how friendly everyone is, you know, they can't get past the fact that everyone in the subdevelopment waves at them. They want to know, what do they want? They don't want to know anything. They're just friendly. It's the way they are. So that's kind of my approach, is that when I go back to New York City, I see the devastation that's there. I see the family business put out. I see the people who had jobs who no longer have jobs. And more importantly, what I see is fear, and that's what that mask represents to me, abject fear. It is a psychological fear put on people, and I'm not going to get into whether it's effective or it's not, because honestly, I've seen reports in both directions. I will tell you my own personal experience. I wore a mask 16 hours a day after 9/11, all through the months thereafter. As a matter of fact, I brought one of the masks. This mask is an N100. It's designed to stop particles better than anything you're wearing. I wore it. It didn't stop me from getting sick. I developed asthma, CPOD, sleep apnea. I got pneumonia almost every year for the next five years, and I wore a mask religiously. And I'm not even going to say it's because the mask didn't work. I'm going to say it's because it was used outside of its purpose. They're not designed to be worn all day. If you have a medical condition that requires you to wear it, by all means, you wear it. But to impose that on everyone else is such government overreach, it's offensive. And I find ironically, you know, one of the most off questions I'm asked by my southern friends down here is, why do people move from the Northeast? And they want to do everything down here the way they did it. If it was so much better up there, why did they leave? And I usually tell them, I go, oh, it's because you've been trained to do it that way. They've been trained up there to do it that way, and it's up to you to teach them better. And I find it very ironic now that I'm speaking at a meeting, because I've made it my life mission to stay out of the eye of government, but I think it's this important. And now I won't be able to say that they do things different, because if you do this, which you're about to do, because I usually believe government meetings are foregone conclusions, that you're going to be exactly like New York City. You're going to be just like them, and you'll have taken away one of my biggest sales pitches to everybody, that we're not New York City. So if you go through with it, you know, that's your choice. You know, that's what we have a government for. I think you're wrong. I don't think the masks prevent anything. They're not designed to be worn all day. No one handles them correctly, and it's just sad to me that I will now live in my second state that I'll contemplate leaving because the government is all over my life, and I don't want it there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Again, in the interest of time, if we could refrain from clapping after everyone speaks, we can get through this a lot quicker. Mr. Spate is up, and after Mr. Spate, and I'm sorry, I cannot read this, it's Rich Gailing? Gailing, sorry. Mr. Gailing, you're up after Mr. Spike.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay with this?
Yep. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Charlie Spate, 229 Stone Ridge Drive in the exceptional neighborhood of Wood Creek in Lexington. I want to first tell you that I appreciate and respect the decision you and other governments have to make. It's tough. A pandemic is something that you can't really prepare for, and you certainly can't prepare legislation for it. However, and you have to pardon me, my problem is with the letter and not the spirit of the ordinance. An ordinance is a law, and laws are difficult enough as it is. You claim in the ordinance that you are following CDC guidelines on, quote, "face coverings", unquote. Yet the language of the ordinance doesn't specify what type of face covering as the CDC does. In fact, I see three council members without a mask. I see two who are not following CDC guidance on masks. CDC specifically recommends fabric face coverings, not paper, that are washable. You can't wash the paper. Further, the masks are to completely cover nose and mouth. You simply say "face covering." According to the ordinance, this is acceptable. Not only that, this is acceptable. It's a face covering. And I'm sure Chief Green would appreciate, as will bank tellers and convenience store clerks, a classic ski mask is acceptable according to your ordinance. Excuse me. Further, how are you going to enforce this? Look at, most of the people in this room, including three council members, aren't wearing masks at all. If the ordinance passes tonight and instantly becomes enforceable or in order, you're going to have the chief arrest them? Are you going to find them? Are you going to put a mark on their permanent record? What are you going to do if someone is seen not wearing a mask? You can't do anything, and you know that's to be the truth. You don't want to use up emergency resources or police resources to go out and watch to see if people are wearing a mask, be it this kind, or Batman and Robin come to town. They would be in violation of the spirit of what you're looking for. I respectfully recommend, then, that instead of an ordinance, a law, the council consider rewriting your intent as an advisory, a governmental advisory with all CDC recommendations. CDC also equally recommends washing hands and 6 feet distance. Nowhere in the ordinance do you address washing hands and 6 feet distancing, as does the CDC. If you're going to use the CDC as your resource, use all of it. Don't cherry pick. So I want to again urge you to reconsider, not as an ordinance, but as advisory with all of those guidances from the CDC. It would follow the spirit of your intent without the appearance of an amateurish and powerless work of faux leadership. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gailing. Up next will be Lynn Tucker. Mr. Gailing, please, if you would, name an address for the record.
Hey, Rich Gailing, 122 Stony Brook Lane, Lexington. Not a doctor. Don't pretend to be a doctor or anything. We are under 280 days of the 14-day flatten the curve. A lot of people have brought up points I was going to bring up, but the one thing that I have a problem with is when people have religious and health reasons exemptions, which you include in the ordinance, those people, when you pass a mandate, they get looked at ugly. They get treated bad when they're out in public because they're not wearing a shirt that says, "I have a health issue." They're not walking around showing everybody that, hey, I have a health issue. I feel like this should not be something you should mandate. This should be a choice. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't, don't wear a mask. End of story. Again, a lot of people brought great points, so I'm going to leave it there. Thank you very much.
Rich, thank you very much. Next, we will have Lynn Tucker.
Hi.
Good evening. Please, your name and address for the record, and after Ms. Tucker is Sarah Grace Allen.
I live at 118 Newmont Drive, Lexington, and I am a physician and a concerned citizen, and I'm here to educate on the pros and actually in favor of the face mask ordinance. It's a temporary ordinance, and this is not a permanent law. We're in the middle of a pandemic, something which we have not experienced in over 100 years. It's a terrible thing. It takes measures to reel this in. I know everybody's exhausted, and everybody's fatigued, and everybody's tired. I know people have heard one thing at the beginning of the pandemic, because this is a novel or a new virus that we've never seen before. So yes, you have heard conflicting evidence at the beginning, but now we pretty much know that this is a respiratory virus that is aerosolized in the air, can stay in the air up to an hour. So that's why a lot of people you're seeing, a lot of counties and state governments are mandating masks, because it does work. It saves lives by reducing the amount of viral load that you inhale. It's not perfect. It's not 100%, but it does reduce your viral load, which means fewer people will die, fewer people will need to be hospitalized in a system that, if you look at the numbers, our hospitals are near or beyond capacity. So that's why this is important. It really should be a statewide mandate, but since we don't have that, each county and each town has had to take responsibility and do its right for its citizens as a whole, its whole community, and for the hospital system. And if you care about the floor workers, the employees, the nurses, the environmental services that have worked day in and day out, if you want to give them something for Christmas, wear a mask so that you're not hospitalized and they can get home to their families. Again, I am saying this as a physician and as a concern for my patients and for my community. There are a lot of people with pre-existing conditions, and if we can cut down on the amount of load that they get so that they can actually come in, if you care, if you're a business, I think you would care about your patrons. You care about your employees. You wouldn't want to lose your employees to quarantine or worse, being hospitalized. So I think this, again, this is temporary. This is not permanent. This is temporary. This is meant so that we can gain a hold of this until we can get most people vaccinated. Most people get this where the virus can't go from person to person. Once everybody who's vaccinated and we get enough people with immunity, then this virus will go away. You'll have no one to go to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Next up, Ms. Sarah Grace Allen, and after Ms. Allen, Rebecca Godfrey.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Sarah Grace Allen, and I live at 105 Turnberry Lane. I'm here on behalf of our community to once again protest the impending mask mandate. Masks don't work. Throughout the years of studies about them, long before COVID, the data shows that they are ineffective at preventing viral transmission. Even the most generous of recent studies admit the data is inconclusive. Inconclusive means there was no conclusion, which means there was little to no difference, which ultimately means they don't work. They are, however, extremely effective in causing many negative side effects when worn for long periods of time in unsterile environments and with unsanitary application. It's a bacterial nightmare, not to mention the long-term mental, emotional, and psychological harm caused by such inhumane muzzlement. We're in cold and flu season. The hospitals have increased in capacity, and people are getting sick, as they always do this time of year. The difference is, the majority of these cold and flu cases are now being hailed as COVID. How wonderful that after all these years, we finally found a cure for such common reoccurring illnesses. To continue enforcing harmful and ultimately futile measures to combat a virus with a 99% survival rate is not only unscientific, it is blatantly absurd, and it reeks of manufactured hysteria from those who may have underlying motives of financial gain or power. On December 9th, Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston called me to discuss the mask ordinance. She's always been willing to hear both sides, and during our conversation, she asked to speak to my friends in the medical field who share my views on this issue. Though one declined for dread of becoming a target, many others called or wrote. One, a doctor at Lexington Medical, called Mrs. Livingston and gave an opposing account from what Mrs. Livingston had received from hospital officials, as well as his opinion on the inefficacy of masks. It's common knowledge that doctors at LMC are expected to toe the line. This doctor didn't speak of this conversation to anyone but me, and, according to Mrs. Livingston, the only people she shared his testimony with was the council. However, a few days later, this doctor received a call from his superior at the hospital telling him to immediately contact Mrs. Livingston again and retract his opinion. The implication is clear. This is the equivalent of witness intimidation, and it is a blatant suppression of free speech. And if this incident doesn't plainly prove to everyone that this virus has been politicized, then they are willfully blind. We are in a dark and divisive time in our nation. This pandemic has proven that. There are some who are sincere people that have been misled into irrational fear. But there's also a small but implacable mob bent on perpetuating that fear and vilifying others who merely want the freedom to do what they equally feel is best for their health. What the people of Lexington need from our local elected officials is the perception to see past the politics and propaganda and the wisdom to recognize the false narrative repeatedly regurgitated by the media and other sources of fabrication and data manipulation. Allowing people the liberty to make decisions for their own health is a benign alternative to the aforementioned chaos and discord. But voting in favor of these baseless restrictions is a vote to ensure a divided, broken, and sick community. We have a strong Christian tradition in Lexington. We are not the fearful and unbelieving of Revelation 21, and we don't pander to pandemonium. Our God is not a God of fear and deception. He is a God of peace and truth. I ask council to vote on the side of truth and to uphold the ideal of personal liberty upon which this country was founded. I ask you to favor freedom, regardless of the cries from those so willing to exchange it for the false sense of safety sold by power-hungry authorities. For we know that power is never a means, it is always an end. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Rebecca Godfrey. After Ms. Godfrey is Nick LaVena. Ms. Godfrey, thank you.
Rebecca Godfrey, 125 Hunter's
Rebecca Godfrey, 125 Hunter's Trail.
Thank you.
So the main reason you want to mandate masks is to save lives, right? We all want to save the lives. Have you looked at the overall number of deaths these past few years? 2.7 million, 2.8 million, 2.9 million in 2019. Do you know what we're at right now? 2.7 million. We only have 10 more days in 2020. We're only at 2.7 million. And the death rate has not exploded even though the media would like everyone to believe that it has. In 2018, the average number of deaths per day was 7,778. 2020, 7,777. Where were the mask mandates in 2018? Or in 2019, when the death rate was greater, when we had 2.9 million people dying, more than this year? Where's the mask mandate? If you are so interested in saving lives, let's start with minimizing the leading cause of death, heart disease and cancer, one out of seven deaths. Should you step in and mandate a ban on high cholesterol foods, fast foods, cigarettes, and force people to exercise? That would save more lives. What about motor vehicle deaths? One in 114. Should you step in and ban and mandate a ban on driving? That would save more lives. What about choking on food? One in 3,400, which is .029%. Should you step in and mandate a ban on all eating to save more lives? Do you know the odds of choking on food are the same odds that a person age 45 to 64 has of dying from COVID? .029%. Are any of you worried about dying from choking on food? Then you shouldn't be worrying about dying from COVID either. I'm sure it didn't even cross your mind today that you might die from choking on food. COVID is less than half as infectious as the common cold, and we are treating it like the bubonic plague. The CDC has defined close contact as someone who is within six feet of an infected person for more than 15 minutes. When we are in the grocery store, when's the last time you were within six feet of someone, talking to them for more than 15 minutes? It never happens, right? We barely even make eye contact with one another in the grocery stores, let alone stop and talk. Everybody's like this the whole time. I'm not even going to, mandatory masking in stores is completely illogical and unnecessary. I'm not even going to get into the glaring ineffectiveness of masks or how cases have risen ever since Americans have been forced to mask. Do you know what this boils down to? Trust. By forcing a mandate, you are sending a message that you do not trust the citizens of Lexington to make decisions about what is best for them and their families. In turn, this is causing the citizens of Lexington to lose trust in their council members. When we lack mutual respect to make decisions on our own, we become divided. Please do not cave to any people or organizations that are profiting and keeping people sick and in fear. Do not reinstate the mask mandate in Lexington. Wear a mask for the rest of your life. You are more than welcome to, but do not force us to follow that lead.
I just want to say a comment right quick.
No ma'am.
All right. You guys might go to listen. Y'all aren't listening. I asked the chair first.
You're going to be asked to leave if you keep it up. Okay. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Nick LaVenus. After Mr. LaVenus, Andrea Negarico? No? Got it totally wrong. Thank you.
My name is Nick LaVentis. I've been a resident of Wood Creek subdivision for 27 years. You know, I'm hearing about civil liberties and all these, all these talks of, I wonder how many people in here have had the COVID.
Every one of my family. Every one of them.
And they've all survived it well?
Every one of them. My obese mother with 12 different COVID symptoms, I had it.
Okay. Well. Well, I, I, in December of last year, December 27th, I came down with COVID. Didn't know what it was. Had no idea. I had a little cough come up and lasted a couple of days and then had a little hard time breathing and didn't know what to do. I called up a friend of mine who's a doctor, and she said, "Take some Z-Pak and see if you can get the congestion out." I tried that and didn't do anything either. Then I started coughing much more. Five days later, you know, I'm sitting in my bed, can't hardly breathe, can't catch any, any breath out of my nose or my mouth, and I was afraid I was going to asphyxiate. I started writing stuff down for my brother in case something happened to me where I didn't wake up the next day, so he would know how to take care of my state. I'm 66 years old, and, you know, I've never been involved with COVID before or a virus like this has come around and caused so much turmoil. But, you know, making it through, it was 26 days where, when I finally had gotten out of all of that. I went to my doctor. I called him up and told him I had to come see him, and he said, you know, "What have you got?" I said, "I don't know." And he said, "Well, Nick, we're busy today. Can you come back? Can you come Friday?" I said, "No, I might not be here Friday." I went to see him. When I got in there, he put me in a little room, finally came in there and looked at me and said, "My God, man, what in the world have you got?" But he gave me all these different medications. He gave me a shot. He gave me an opioid of some sort and some sinus thing. And combination of all of that, over a course of eight days, brought me out of it. Nobody likes wearing a mask. And from that time forward, I didn't have any problem wearing it. And my brother-in-law, who's an attorney and works in Columbia, also wore a mask all the time. He had an occasion to go down to Conway about late Sep- mid-September. On his way out of Conway, he stopped off at a barber shop. When he walked in, nobody was wearing the mask. When he was cutting his hair, he had the mask still on. They asked him to take it off so they could cut around his ears. He did, and two days later, when he's home, he gave the virus that he had contracted from that barber shop to his, to my sister and to his youngest son. From that period on, he spent, he had to go to the hospital after five days. He was in the hospital. He went on the ventilator. He was sedated for a month and, well, seven weeks, where he was totally unconscious, living through a tube. And, you know, all of us were, the six, all of the rest of the family was in, just devastated with it. The doctors that were there had done everything they could for him when it went from his kidneys to the, and doing dialysis to his lungs. Bottom line is, he survived it. Those doctors said that nobody that they've ever been with have seen somebody that sick and survived, and they consider that their win. In a situation like this, there's no right and wrong. I look at the newspaper, and last Wednesday, Columbia extended the face mask law until February. They've got a cartoon that says a guy's wearing a shirt with no mask on it as he's being put in a stretcher to go to the hospital because he's got the COVID. You know, I asked the council to use your judgment. Y'all are the, y'all are the leaders of the community. I love this community. I've been, you know, an avid spokesman in this community, but it's up to y'all to make the decision because there are going to be people that don't want it.
Thank you, Mr. LaVenus. Andrea.
Nazarenko.
Nazarenko. I apologize.
That's okay. My name is Dr. Andrea Nazarenko. I received my PhD from the University of South Carolina in clinical community psychology with an emphasis on quantitative methods. I also received my first master's degree from Columbia University in New York, my second from University of South Carolina, and my third in applied statistics from University of South Carolina. In addition, I'm a number-one international bestseller on a book on holistic health, and I, more than any of that, am an advocate mom, an advocate, an advocate for our communities. I'm a mom, and I really care about making our community healthy. I'm sitting here and I'm reflecting on what everybody is saying today, and we're all here because we care about our community. Nobody is here just because of the mask. Everybody is here because we want people to stay healthy, and everybody comes from a different background. Everybody comes from a different perspective. Everybody has a different relationship with the medical establishment, with children, with elderly, with sick people, with not-sick people. Everybody comes from a different perspective. But we can all agree on one thing, in that our goal is to keep Lexington healthy. So the argument of whether or not masks work and the corruption and the political backing behind all of it is not really the question we have at hand. The question we have at hand is, is there enough evidence to support a policy? Are we, are we practicing evidence-based policymaking through this mandate? So we could take a step back and take away the masks, or keep the masks if we want, but, you know, to be facetious, and say, "What makes a good policy?" Well, a good policy comes from science, right? That's what our policy should be based on. We should have data that it's effective and that it works in the real world. Our country, our country has a history of really bad policymaking at the federal and local level. We waste billions of dollars annually on policies, programs, and procedures that don't work. In fact, so much so that it sparked an entire field called implementation science, which is my background. It's what I do consulting work with, including consulting work with the CDC. My organization does. And, and we spend more money than any other nation just in healthcare, and yet we rank at the bottom of the list when it comes to healthcare outcomes. What we're doing doesn't work. What we're doing doesn't work because we're not implementing it well. It doesn't really make sense to make a policy and then not implement it. So let's start at step one. Let's first see if there's even evidence for a mask. And we've heard from some people that there is evidence and some people that there's no evidence, but there's two leading studies right now, and I'm not going to go over them because I emailed them to you in advance, but there's two large-scale studies that looked at masking in the communities. One is the CDC study itself, and I'm willing to leave these studies with anyone who's interested. It showed that there was no difference between those who wore masks and those who didn't wear masks in the community. This was CDC study, and it's in table one somewhere. I could explain, I could walk through the table past my five minutes. The second is a Danish study where they gave, it's a randomized control study where they show a gold sta- that's the gold standard way of doing a study, and they gave recommendations for the intervention group to use a mask. They all used the mask as, as directed, and there was no difference in outcomes that were observed between those who wore the mask and didn't wear the mask. There are some studies that show masks are effective. These studies are mathematical models. The mathematical models use something called Monte Carlo simulation studies. As somebody who's done Monte Carlo simulation studies, I could tell you what those are. Those are mathematical models that use these algorithms that help you determine what it would be like in a probabilistic sort of way. There's a lot of assumptions that are made when you use those models, and those assumptions are based on previous knowledge. We did not have any previous knowledge on COVID when we did those studies, so we have a lot of ways those could be wrong. The other studies that show that masking is effective are in hospital-based studies. Hospital populations are different than community-based populations for many reasons, because the populations are different and the building, the facility itself is different, the HVAC units and all of this stuff. And so, so the question is, do we have enough evidence to support this policy? Are we practicing evidence-based policymaking if we enforce this mandate? And the question by the evidence side of things is no. So then you could say, "Well, this is still a really good idea. So what? So what? We don't have evidence. We're just going to do it because it's too new. We don't have the evidence, and we have all this anecdotal stuff. What's the harm?" Well, this brand-new study just came-
Thank you, Andrea. That's your time.
Oh, that's my time. Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Donna. Donna Gailing. After Ms. Gailing will be Susan Yates.
Hi, my name's Donna Gailing, 122 Stony Brook Lane. Just a couple things because most everyone has went over a lot of the things that I did want to say. Back in, I don't know if anybody realizes this, back in 2009, WHO actually changed the definition of what pandemic used to mean. Anybody aware of that? Okay, I'm just going to read sort of off this. "Had it not been for the World Health Organization changing the definition of pandemic, COVID-19 would no longer be an issue. The WHO's original definition of a pandemic specified simultaneously epidemics worldwide with enormous numbers of deaths and illnesses." Now, that's what it appears that we have from all the information that we're getting. We've also got other statistics that doesn't ever get out, like the one, I think it was this lady was saying about, the deaths have not really risen. We've still got as many deaths, but it's not like they're over and above what we would normally have statistically. This definition was changed in the month leading up to the 2009 swine flu pandemic. The WHO removed the severity and high mortality criteria, leaving the definition of the pandemic as a worldwide epidemic of disease. So that was changed, so that's making it a little bit different. I also want to say that most of the people, when you go out now without a mandate, are wearing masks because that's what they choose to do, and that's okay. Along with everyone else, I feel like it should be our choice. You're finding a lot of, "We own a business." We find them in the parking lot all day long. You're talking about the, the bacteria that's found on them. We have to go out and we have to pick those masks up, or we can just let them float around and fly in the wind. You see everybody with them hanging on their mirrors and, yeah, you know, well, that's not really the right thing to do, but sometimes that's what, what happens, and a lot of times that's what happens. We seem to be doing this, and I'm going to repeat this sort of, is that we're doing the same thing over and over, and we're still sort of getting the same result. It didn't make anything better. I have someone very close to me who got it, and they're in the medical profession. They wore a mask all the time, all the time when they went in there, and that's where they got it from. So, you know, sometimes it may help. Sometimes it may not help. I know a lot of states are doing this, and like someone else made the comment, that Richland County has done it, but y'all all look a little around my age, I will say, and I don't know if your parents ever said to you, your mother or father, ever said, "If everybody else was jumping off the cliff, would you do it just because they're doing it?" We need to have some common sense here, and that's what I really want to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna. Next up is Susan Yates, and after Ms. Yates is Kathy Cagney. Ms. Yates, welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Susan Yates, and I live at 165 Riggs Drive in Lexington, and I am here to support the mask mandate. As I look around this room, I don't see six feet distancing between most of the people that are not wearing masks. Many of them have already had COVID, of course, because they aren't wearing masks and they aren't doing anything to, to stop the spread. This is a public health issue. This doesn't have to do with your civil rights. It doesn't. I mean, we wear seatbelts. That's a requirement. There's really not that much difference between the two.
Excuse me, sir.
That is because it's not a law here in South Carolina, but most places it is. Because when you get into a motorcycle accident, you're going to kill yourself. But the problem with this here is it's not just you that you're going to kill. You're going to kill somebody else, too. If there is something that can be done to keep COVID at bay, as a community, I don't understand why we wouldn't want to do that, why we would not love our neighbor enough to wear a stupid mask. I don't like wearing a mask, but I do it because- I don't like wearing a mask, but I do it because I see that it does make a difference. The people that I talk to say it makes a difference. The reason that we haven't had the best luck, look around. Because people don't want to do it. So they just decide not to. And then they say that it's their civil liberties. So we have over 300,000 people that have died in America. We've had over 4,500 in South Carolina that have died this year from COVID. The only way that we're going to be able to stop it until the vaccine is widely available is social distancing, wearing masks, and avoiding groups. There are a lot of people that I know that refuse to come to this meeting because of this. They wouldn't come. They wrote, but they won't come here. And I just don't understand the selfishness. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Yates. Next up, Ms. Cagney, Kathy Cagney. After Ms. Cagney is Mike Farnham.
Hi, my name is Kathy Cagney.
Kathy, before you get started, can you please speak closer to the mic? Somebody texted me from the audience, I mean, from TV land, said they can't hear y'all speaking.
My name is Kathy Cagney. I live at 125 Woodcut in Lexington. I live in Wood Creek, been there for 20 years. I was in the overflow room and just listening to some of the other comments. I'm just, I don't know, surprised, appalled. I don't quite get it. But I'm here to ask the council to reinstate the mask ordinance. This will be one of the easiest decisions that you guys have ever made. To me, it's a no-brainer. I wear a mask nine hours a day, and I work in a very high-volume physical therapy office. And can't social distance because we have to be, you know, touching people and stretching people. And I will say that in our office, and we have about 13 therapists, none of us have gotten sick. And we are seeing hundreds of patients, and we all wear a paper mask. Okay? So they work. I think it's about doing it to protect yourself, but not only protect yourself, but protect others. You know, it's simple. It really is. I mean, the cases are going up. They spiked crazy after Thanksgiving. We're in a critical time right now. We're looking at Christmas week and the week after. People are going to gather, okay? And the cases are going to spike again. Our hospital workers are friggin' tired. They're tired. I would hate to leave here now and go and get in a car accident, and God forbid, have to go to the ER and really have someone to work on you when they're tired. Maybe they've already pulled a 12-hour shift, and they got to somehow pull it together to take care of you and keep you living. I think it's irresponsible of people not to wear masks. This is, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. This is a very, this is not permanent. This is going to be temporary. It's a small thing to ask to wear a mask. It's not hard. It's not hard at all. I mean, I have no problem with it whatsoever. I have an 82-year-old mother. I go see her in North Augusta. I wear a mask the whole time I'm there, in her apartment, around her, in the car when I take her somewhere. And it's all about keeping her safe, because if she gets this, she will not survive it. That's a guarantee. She has a lot of comorbidities. But anyways, yeah, last week, we had 19,694 cases in the state of South Carolina. That's crazy. Most people do fine. I mean, my daughter, both my daughters have had it. My 18-year-old got it in June. How I didn't get it, I have no idea, but I can tell you one thing. She was up in her room the whole time we distanced. I wore a mask anytime I was around her. So the masks work. It's not an unreasonable request to require somebody going into a place of business to wear a mask. It's not about freedoms, it's about respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cagney. Up next is Mr. Mike Farnham, and after Mike is Ally Sorom. Mike, welcome. Thank you, if you would, name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Dr. Michael Farnham, 635 Wise Ferry Road here in Lexington. I've been a practicing chiropractor for over 30 years. I run two offices in South Carolina. I'm trying to think of, I came unprepared tonight, but I was sitting, listening to everyone, and I just want to say, look at the division that this is creating in our society. It's tearing us apart. And it doesn't have to be this way. Nobody's being told they can't wear a mask when they want to wear a mask. Not one single person. You can wear a mask if you want to. You don't have to tell us to wear one. If you're concerned, wear a mask. If you're not, it's your choice. So I took some notes down, and I thought, well, what kind of path can I take that's different from everyone else? So I looked up the definition of the word "health." And health is an interesting thing. The definition of health is not merely the absence of disease. I find that interesting. You can be unhealthy without having a disease. But it goes on to say that health is the physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual well-being of a person. And I would argue that the mental and emotional is totally being left out of this equation. The distress that I see every day in my office, and I represent hundreds of patients, wear a mask, don't wear a mask, the stress that it's causing, the type of health problems coming into my office is beyond something that I've seen in 30 years of my career. And again, you can wear a mask if you want to wear a mask. You don't have to tell people to do this. So as I was taking my notes, several things came to mind. I noticed that the majority of people here are in opposition to the mask-wearing. I don't think that's a bad thing. I'm not opposed to it one way or the other. But you don't have to burn down my house to protect yours. That's something we need to think about in this. A lot of people here already have preconceived ideas. Wrong. Look at the public. We're out here tonight talking to you. One of my favorite movies is Braveheart. And in that movie, there's a line that if you lead, we'll follow you. Lead us. Make decisions based on rational thinking. People here tonight have given you numbers, given you articles. You've got doctors on both sides of the equation, just like the public. It's ripping us apart. Just ask us, and we'll do what we can do on our own accord. It's just pitting one citizen against another, and it tears me up. I've lived here for about 10 years. I'm from Orangeburg originally. My wife and I, I see it in my day-to-day work. I see it in my life, going into Walmart. If you don't have a mask on, people give you the look. If you have a mask on, people give you the look. This is terrible for our society. And you're in the position to lead. We want you to lead. But lead with intelligence and good thinking. And there's no consensus one way or the other on this equation. But I just, it just tears me up. I see people's legs shaking. I see people's heads bobbing. We're emotionally and mentally stressed from this. We don't need to be. We're big boys and girls. We can make the right decisions on our own behalf. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Farnham. Next up, Ally Sorom. Ally, and after Ally is our Sorom. Is Ally here? She's coming? Thank you. You're not Ally, you are Sorom. So welcome, please.
I am the Sorom.
Yeah, so state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sorom. I live in 103 Woodcut Drive in Lexington, South Carolina. And I've come here to make a mask mandate, primarily because of what I see. And in the hospital systems, we're completely overwhelmed. Not just here, in the entire country, in the entire world. This is not something to be debatable. You can go around, you can ask your friends, you can ask your people that work in the industry really know how overwhelmed they are. And I got personal experience in that. My son is a secondary resident in Harvard Medical School, and he's working 30-hour shifts to save people's life. Because people didn't take care of themselves, go do what they got to do, they end up in the hospital. I hear a lot of things. I have a tremendous amount of respect for everyone's viewpoint, right? Let's not make this issue about freedom or religion. But facts. See what happens around you. Lexington Hospital is poor. There are people everywhere. Once you get into a situation, very difficult to get out. It takes very, very special people to intubate people. It's not something that you can just go get it done. You need experienced people. These are the hospital staff, the nurse, the doctors. And they are completely overwhelmed. You can help them. This is a temporary thing. No one's asking people to wear masks for ever. No. I am for freedom. I don't like rules being imposed on me. It's like going on a highway. I-10. You got road repair work being done. People are asking you to go slow down. You follow the law, slow down for the two-year timeframe or a year timeframe that it takes to get the project done. This is very, very similar. One, two months, three months, whatever it takes. Help the people that are going to help you if they are in need. But if it is your child, your brother, father, mother, that's going to be in the hospital. The people that can help are the frontline workers, the hospitals, nurses, and the doctors. You guys putting them at risk by not using the mask all the time. Use it as best as you can. All it is, it's a request. I don't call it a mandate. It's a request, a plea. Have empathy on the people that are going to help you. That's it.
Thank you very much. We had one more Sorom, I think. Is that your wife? Or was that somebody with you, Mr. Sorom? That was it? Very good. Is there anyone else that did not sign up that would like to speak? Very good. That concludes our public hearing for tonight. Our first item of old business is from Mayor Protem Hazel Livingston. This is final reading of an ordinance requiring individuals to wear face coverings in retail establishments. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In effort to help slow the spread of COVID-19 virus, town council passed the first reading of an ordinance to require the wearing of face coverings in the town on December the 7th. The requirement apply to retail establishments. Attached is the ordinance for final reading. And I would like to amend this ordinance. Individuals are also encouraged to follow all CDC and DHEC guidelines regarding social distancing and are encouraged to wash their hands frequently, to stay home if they feel ill, and to call their healthcare provider if they are displaying symptoms of COVID-19. And I would also like to add that we requested all masks follow CDC guidelines. And from what I can see, the paper mask is acceptable. It's the N95 that they don't encourage. And that's not reuse of the paper mask unless you put it in a paper bag, and I just looked that up on the CDC. But with that being said, I'll leave it at follow the CDC guidelines for the mask. Make amendment for that motion.
Mayor Protem makes an amendment to the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Manas, second. Some motion, any further discussion?
Do we vote on her amendment? Because I have an amendment, too.
Yes, so let's do one at a time. Yes, sir, Ms. Law.
Can we just clarify what that amendment was? I heard several references to the CDC, and just looking something up. Could we clarify what that is, please?
It was, individuals are encouraged to follow all CDC and DHEC guidelines regarding social distancing and are encouraged to wash their hands frequently, to stay home if they feel ill, and to call their healthcare provider if they are displaying symptoms of COVID-19. And I would also like to put in there that we follow CDC and DHEC's guidelines as far as masks, what masks are effective.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Ms. Law. Anyone else?
So are we going to speak on this first, or?
Take a vote on it.
And then we're going to speak after she amends?
On the amendment only.
On just the amendment. Yes, sir. All those in favor of the amendment that Mayor Protem put forward, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Very good. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add an amendment, please.
Yes, Ms. Manas.
Section 5, the effective date and time, I would like to make, this ordinance shall take effect upon the signature of the mayor and shall remain in force until May 1st, 2021.
May 1st, 2021. Ms. Manas makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker, second. Is that motion, any further discussion? Yes.
Can we speak now on what we have to say?
Well, on the amendment.
Do the amendment, and then we'll vote on the full ordinance.
That's correct.
I'm just voting on the amendment.
Anyone have anything to say on the amendment? Very good. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Very good. All right, so now you have an amended ordinance? Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion for the ordinance as we have it with the two amendments.
Mayor Protem makes a motion to amend the ordinance and add the two amendments, one by her and one by Ms. Manas. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr.-
Yes, sir, Mr. Lawrence.
I just want to say that I appreciate everybody that came out. We had qualified, articulate, passionate people on both sides of the equation. When things get politicized, oftentimes, an argument begins, and we forget what we're arguing about. And everybody just gets really nasty and polemical and calling names. And that's kind of what our nation has devolved into in a lot of realms. But it doesn't have to be that way. We still live in a society where good men and good women can disagree. We can have honest, civil, public debate. And we can vote. And then if we vote and this ordinance goes in, as I suspect it will, I'll put on my mask and walk out. I'm a law-abiding citizen, and I believe in the principles of our republic. I am going to be in the minority on this one, though. And I'll tell you why I'm in the minority. I'm in the minority when I vote against this because right now, name me a place where you can go in Lexington where the private business doesn't demand that you wear a mask. It's, there's probably some out there. I'm not saying that they're not there. But what I'll tell you right now is if you want to go get groceries and you go to the supermarkets of Lexington, that private store requires you to wear a mask. Is that enforceable? Yeah, if you don't wear the mask, they can call the police for trespassing. So it's fully enforceable, but it's that private business owner who has determined that they don't want to absorb any risk. They get to make the determination about how much risk is with a mask or without. And so you can go to the supermarket. Can you go get your pharmacy medications? Yes. All pharmacies, as far as I know, they require masks. Can you go out and eat? Yes. The governor requires that of all our restaurants. Can you go get your haircut? Yes. The governor requires that of our salons. Can you go to Home Depot and throw some mulch out? Yes. So I am sure that there are some local businesses that are not requiring masks right now. But they have to be precious, precious few, from what I can see. And so I'm never in favor of the government bringing its almost unlimited power to bear when the private market and private property rights are already established, which are taking care of this. So the people that are pro-mask, I would say that, you know, I'm not mad about this. Not an emotional deal with me. But people that are pro-mask- But people that are pro-mask, you're getting about 95% of what you want. And if you pass the mandate, you're still gonna get about 95% of what you want. Some people are just not gonna comply. And so I think that's there, and I think that the private market is the best place to solve problems, not government. Because when government gets it wrong, it's wrong for everybody, and government doesn't change very easily. The private market, it changes very easily. And so as we sit here and look at this mask ordinance, I do want to say that, that it's not, people that are against masking, and I heard a lot of things, I'm not necessarily against masking, I'm just very careful about a mandate. And it was said, and I won't belabor the point, but it is true that up until somewhere April or May of this year, that all of the science that had ever been contemplated in the realm of community masking had 100% followed in line with the fact that it is not effective as a public health measure. And I know that some people would say, well, this is a novel virus and it hangs in the air, it aerosolizes, there's different things. And so, yeah, it may be proven. It may yet be proven that we should have been public masking. But if you look, look right now, it's ambiguous at best. There are many states, Alabama, Mississippi, California, Pennsylvania. If you compare our rates, and we are in a time right now when our rates are, are rising dramatically, but all you have to do is compare our rates with 38 states in the United States that have state masking mandates. If there really was, if the mandate itself was the silver bullet, you would see radically different numbers in a state like ours than you would in a state like Alabama. Alabama's doing a lot worse than we are, and their mandate's been in place since June. North Carolina's been doing worse than we are. Their mandate's been in place since July. Did you know in North Carolina, they went as far as to say if you have people in your own vehicle who are not from your household, you have to wear a mask? You just have to be careful, and not with this government. We're, we're all well-meaning people. We've had this debate, and we can debate and be friends and move forward. You have to be careful about government. It will overreach. And so as we look at, at this, we need to come together as a community regardless of where we fall on this. I will tell you as of right now that we are nervous about our rates rising, but there are 30 states doing worse than we are, the majority of which have mask mandates in place and have been in place for almost six months now. The, the Great Plains had a spike, they're coming down. Midwest had a spike, they're on the way down. We're having a spike, we're on the way up. And all those states who were mandated and some who were not, everybody spiked. And I will say that Councilman Lyle and Councilman Williams and myself were invited to Lexington Medical Center and did go there and meet with Dr. Brent Powers and, and the CEO, Todd Augsberger. And I will tell you, they are working hard. It is tragic. It is difficult. I do not minimize this in any way. There is a lot of pain and suffering. The nurses, the staff, they're wearing these puffers, they're not wearing the N95s, they're, they're wearing these puffers for 12-hour shifts. It's tough. I, I don't, I don't minimize that in any way. And I applaud those people, and I want to do everything I can to help them, as we all ought. But at, at the end of the day, if the mask mandates had taken Alabama's rates 20 cent, 20% below ours, if they had taken Pennsylvania's down, if they had taken Wisconsin's down, then I'd be on board. But as of right now, the data doesn't support the fact that there would be any significant change, and that data is easily accessible and widely available. So with all that, I just want to, to close up by saying that, that this has been a difficult issue, but I, for one, as somebody who loves this community, appreciates this council, and wants the best for everybody. If this mandate goes through, I'll wear my mask, and I will comply in every way. If it doesn't go through, you're gonna wear your mask regardless. And if you don't want to wear your mask, don't go to private places where they don't require masks. Appreciate all you guys coming out. This is not going to divide us. Some of you guys spoke very eloquently about that. It is not going to divide, it's not going to destroy. We will move forward together as a community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carons. Anyone else have anything?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Livingston.
If that's okay. I know that a lot of y'all spoke about the psychological effects, and I pulled up the Psychiatric Times today, and this is written by Kathleen A. Clegg, she's an M.D., and Grant Brenner. It's an article that they did in Psychiatric Times, and it says, "To mask or not to mask, why is this even a question? Politics have gotten in the way of mask-wearing and they should not." In their article, they go on to say about people have asserted that wearing a mask is a personal choice, a basic right on par with freedom of speech and the right to bear arms. But wearing a mask is also clearly a public safety issue. How does this differ from the cases of so many other widely accepted public safety issues? When our personal, personal decisions affect others, we cross the line where the public good outweighs personal choice. So it is a personal save, um, safety issue. With that being said, to my council, to the citizens out here, I have respect for all of y'all. I have respect for what you've said. We told each other we loved each other and we respected each other before we came up this afternoon, and, and we disagree. Some of us do. We are definitely living in unprecedented times, and who would have thought just last Christmas that 2020 would be defined by a nasty and unrelenting virus pandemic that has now taken the lives of over 300,000 of American citizens and adversely affected the lives of millions, including a lot of business owners that are small business people, including my own husband. No one has the complete answer to stopping the spread of the virus, but we have heard from the mass majority of those on the front lines of the medical profession, as well as first responders, that wearing a mask when in close proximity to others does indeed help in slowing the spread of the disease. And yes, Ms. Grace, I did speak to the doctor. He did not tell me not to share that with my other council members. I did share that with my other council members. I did tell you. I did not call Brent Powers. I cannot say how that happened, but I did not do anything he didn't tell me I could do. So I want to clarify that with you right there. Yes, there are those who disagree, and, Sarah Grace, me and you had strong conversations, and we disagree, but I respect your right to do so. But I have chosen to follow the pleas of the medical community, along with my own personal convictions and concerns for the weaker ones among us. And unfortunately, Sarah, me and you've had lots of conversations, so I'm back at you here with this. You said we serve a God that doesn't want us to fear, but we also serve a God that at least eight times in the Bible, we are commanded to love their neighbor as their self. Could it be in such a time such as this that God is encouraging, if not commanding us, to consider the weak and vulnerable among us and to suffer the little bit of inconvenience of wearing a mask in order to protect our fellow man? Many are saying it's only the elderly that are really affected by this virus. I say to them, have our elderly not made sacrifices for us individually and as a nation? Do we not owe them the respect to be willing to sacrifice a little for their benefit to protect them? If it's your mother or your grandmother?
Excuse me just a minute. Chief. Mr. Menogue, you can, you can leave, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
We have many safeguards already in place in our society that are there for our well-being, considering the life of a construction worker, a safety vest, a hard hat, eye protection, ear protection, and so on. These things are required to be used. The individual worker may not like having to wear all of these items, but they know they're in place to keep them as safe as possible and also to protect them and their coworkers from harm. Should we think any less of our neighbors? Considering our neighbors and fellow citizens may not always be the easiest thing to do, but we all know that it's the right thing to do. I want to encourage all of the Lexington residents to consider the lives and well-being of your neighbors and to have compassion and grace even when we disagree and not to let anger take you over.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Anyone else have anything? Ms. Law.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'll just start by saying I don't want to belabor all the points that Councilmember Carons brought up, but I do want to highlight a few things. First, I, I want to say that I'm truly thankful that we've all had the opportunity to be here. We've all had the opportunity to speak our minds and have this civil discourse. For everyone that's emailed us, Ms. Berquist, Mr. Menogue, Mr. Spate, Ms. Galing, Dr. Tucker, Ms. Allen, Ms. Godfrey, Mr. LaVena, Dr. Nazrenko, also Ms. Galing, Ms. Yates, Cagney, Dr. Farnham, and Ally and R. Serum. All of your words were appreciated and brought here today, and this is what makes us work. This is what makes us a better country than anybody else, is the marketplace of ideas. And so I do want to also say that I am horribly, horribly upset by the divisiveness that we've had in this country, and, and this is much like a microcosm of it. This feels like it's been nothing more than a, a two-sided hallway and echo chamber, a bunch of confirmation bias. I came in thinking this, and this is what I'm gonna hear, and so this is what I'm gonna believe. And so I would encourage everybody, as you go about this, to, to listen to opposing arguments, to challenge the science on that, and to respect those who maybe arrive at a different conclusion, provided that they do it the right way. Again, the marketplace of ideas, we can't all have the same things. Otherwise, every car in the parking lot would be the same color. Every house would look the same. You know, we like variety, we have different ways about going about these things. But I do want to point out, and I'll agree with Councilmember Carons, I'm a rule follower. So we pass this rule, then you'll see me put a mask on, I'll walk out this way. Because, again, I'm gonna follow a rule. Doesn't change my opinion on this. My opinion is, again, not to exhaust some of the reasons that, that Councilmember Carons brought up, but I, I just want to point out that wanting a safe society and wanting what is best for our community, passing a mask ordinance that requires a mask be worn in such a way that we wrote it, those are not mutually exclusive. For someone to not want a mask ordinance does not mean that they logically require the thought process that they don't want what's best for the society. So I do want to point that out. I think there's a lot of people in the room, there's a lot of people in society that need to hear that I, as a council member, want what's best for you, even though when we cast a vote here in a minute, I'm gonna be opposed to this. That does not mean that I don't care about everybody here or want what's best. It just means I have a different opinion about how we do that. And I want to point out a few of those reasons. I made a few complaints about this the last time we did this, and one of them was that there was no enforcement mechanism. We've talked about it, there's, there's an obscure ordinance that our council and I have talked about a little bit. I, I think it, it has no teeth to it, it has no weight. And so I said this last time, I'll say it again. If you have speed limits and you remove a police officer's ability to write a blue ticket, he has no enforcement mechanism whatsoever, and you turn it into the autobahn, who, who's gonna follow the speed? If we think speed limits cause safe travels or help inhibit accidents on the road, you remove that enforcement mechanism, you take the teeth out. And I said this last time, I had a, a commander years ago in one of my military units who said anytime you see someone fail to meet the standard and they don't correct it, you have lowered the standard. You have lowered it to a, a, a level that's, that's no longer what it was meant to be. So I, I fear that that's partly what we're doing by this. The ordinance is vague. It's got some ambiguities in it that I, as a law, as a lawyer, would certainly enjoy challenging because it's ambiguous. It's vague. It doesn't have narrowly tabled a set of criteria to ultimately reach the, the proof, the level of proof that I think it should have. But something else that was not pointed out last time that I want to bring up is I fear that what we do does not point out the dangers of what this rule is. I've heard a lot of people talk about how they were around their coworkers for 11 hours or they were working for six months straight and never caught COVID because they wore a mask. All the science says that if you don't get yourself near the virus, you can't catch the virus. Okay? So what the mask does is it assumes that you're in a situation where you cannot be six feet apart, or you cannot be very briskly in contact with someone else. That's when the mask is to be used. Putting a mask on when you're driving down the road by yourself in your car is nothing more than a symbol of fear. It's not healthy. It's not how we get past this. We all want what is best for this community, and embracing some of the truths is certainly important, but also not succumbing to some of the unnecessary fears. Now, I love everybody in this community, and I want us to do well. I want us to get past this. Lord knows, but we cannot wait to get past this. Just because we're in the Good South, a, a good football analogy is it's fourth and one, we're on the one-yard line, it's fourth and goal, we're on the one-yard line. The passing game coordinator's in the head coach's ear saying, hey, let's run, dial up the pass play. We know we're gonna score with that. The running coordinator says, hey, run it up the middle, lead blocker, we'll get it in the end zone. They both feel like they're gonna score the touchdown. So as, as we've talked, all of our council members down this row, we all want what's, what's best for you. I respect everyone up here, we just have a difference of opinion. And so what I, in my final pitch, I just want to say, let's set the tone different than the country. Let's be together about this. Let's not be divisive, because we can all disagree, but we're not making any headway if we walk out of here and say we're gonna continue to hate the people that think differently than us. That doesn't do anybody any good. And I'm gonna challenge myself to set the standard and follow this rule. As much as I dislike it, I'm gonna follow this rule. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Law. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Manis.
So I'm gonna vote in favor of this ordinance, and there's a couple of different reasons why. In a letter that we, as town council members, received from DHEC, they said, "Many of our local governments have taken the proactive step of implementing mask mandates to further help reduce the spread of the virus. We continue to urge counties and municipalities to take actions to slow the spread of COVID-19 in their communities. This includes promoting mask ordinances." And then Linda Bale was at the governor's COVID meeting last week, and she says that we are not near the end of this. This is a public health crisis, it's not about politics. This virus doesn't do its harm or doesn't fear people based on your political beliefs. We have to follow the scientific evidence in making decisions about what we're going to do. I also have a lot of respect for Dr. Brent Powers, who is the Lexington Medical Center's chief medical officer, who is in favor of this and has asked us as a town council to pass a mask ordinance. Also Todd Asberger, who is the CEO of Lexington Medical Center, spoke before and asked us to pass a mask ordinance. Superintendent Greg Little, who is the superintendent of our schools. I have a senior at Riverbluff High School, and I want nothing more than for my son to go to school for five days. I want him in there, I want him learning, I want him enjoying his last semester of high school. We can't do that unless we slow the spread in this community. I think that by passing a mask ordinance will help slow the spread. I look forward to seeing the numbers. I see those heads shaking out there. Let's wait. Let's wait a couple of months from the day we pass it and see what these numbers look like. I know that Mr. Baker did a survey of many of the neighborhoods inside the town of Lexington, and I'm gonna let him talk about that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't steal his thunder, but it's amazing what the citizens in the town of Lexington want us to do. And so that, for those reasons, that is why I am gonna support this. And I have heard people say that, that it's not, it doesn't affect people that, that badly that don't have underlying health conditions. And I, I, I just, that makes me very angry. My 18-year-old son has type 1 diabetes. That's not his fault, it's not because he ate candy as a child, none of that. It's terrible for a teenager, it's terrible for anybody, but for a teenager to have to live with this disease. And for people to say, oh, he's got an underlying health condition, it's okay if he gets it and dies. No, it is not. He can live a healthy life for many years if he keeps his blood sugar under control. And for people to say it's not gonna, it, it doesn't affect people with underlying, without underlying health conditions, it's so wrong. And as a mother of a child that's had it since he was in middle school, I take offense to that. But it's for that reason, the reason I want to protect my family and this community, I will be in voting in favor of this ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Manis. Anyone else? Mr. Williams.
Since December 7th, let's see, 2020, I've heard from business owners, owners, citizens of the town, and others from all over concerning the mask ordinance. There are roughly 631 comments on my Facebook post and over 50 shares. In addition to those, I've received over 400 emails and about 400 text messages. While I'm glad those folks took the time to respond to my post, it has made me wonder what has happened to the caring community we've all known. Never did I imagine there would be such a negative comment on both sides of the issue that are downright mean. I've spent hours reading that information. I've spent hours reading that information, sometimes until 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning trying to read whatever one had sent. I've had discussions with lots of folks concerning the current ordinance we are considering tonight. Dr. Brent Powers actually reached out to me at 7:30 in the morning on October 30. I was on vacation with my wife, and she looked at me and said, "Who in the world is calling you?" I took the phone call, and I explained that I believe we should do more on educating the citizens on all of the CDC guidelines, rather than focusing only on a mask ordinance. I suggested we bring all the town and county councils together to create a solution that would encourage everyone to do what's required to reduce the spread of their virus. Dr. Powers arranged for the elected officials that wanted to understand what the hospital was struggling with to attend a meeting on December 16. Medical professionals in attendance shared facts with us that I have not, that I had not been aware of. They provided us with numbers of current admission rates, lengths of stay, and adjustments the hospital had made to the daily routine for accepting and treating patients. They shared that for the first time in 18 years. Lexington Medical Center was actually having to use fable nurses so they could treat all the patients. Before my visit to the hospital, I received an email from someone stating that the hospital was at full capacity and turning away patients. In that meeting, I looked directly at Dr. Powers, and I said, you know, I've known him for a long time. I don't believe he would look me in the eye and lie. And so, I just simply asked him. I said, if this, I asked him if it was true, and he stated that patients who reside in Lexington County were still being treated, but they were within nine or more hour wait time for that day. He also shared that the downtown hospitals were having to do the same thing. Upon some further research, what I found out was your downtown hospitals were diverging their patients to Lexington because they couldn't treat any more patients. There weren't enough beds. Our schools have just announced an extended e-learning week following the winter holidays. This is due to the students and staff having a high rate of exposure to the coronavirus. This is not due to the virus necessarily being in the school, it's from those that are getting exposed and having to miss school time. I've spent the last 14 days trying to find a solution that would bring us all together during this difficult time and relieve the strain on our healthcare. I've spent days driving around town, visiting businesses, and observed the majority of folks wearing a mask, even without a current mask ordinance in place. I understand both sides of this issue. I believe that a health advisory notice to the town, businesses, and citizens alike would accomplish the same goal as a mask ordinance. December 7th, 2020, the CDC shared how to help slow the spread of the COVID-19. The CDC listed multiple things that needed to be done that will help us all stay healthier. I personally would like that article published on our town Facebook pages and our TV channel for folks to review periodically, so that we don't get lax. And we can stay healthy and get out of this crisis situation that we're in. I also suggested to Dr. Powers that Lexington Medical Center provide the town with educational material that we can share with our citizens. I would encourage our businesses and citizens to be vigilant in their efforts to staying healthy, so that our hospital can maintain adequate treatment for those in need. Majority of citizens that have reached out to me are in favor of something being done to improve our current situation. Since, you know, I've listened to both sides of this, I actually spent about an hour and a half yesterday riding around to every business that I could in about an hour and a half period, and I simply got out of the car, walked inside, looked to see who was wearing a mask, who wasn't, and got back in my car and left. For the vast majority, everyone was wearing a mask. To me, maybe we did the wrong thing by calling it a mask ordinance. Maybe we should have called it a health crisis ordinance. Maybe we should have called it something different. I don't know. But when I have about 111 people in my neighborhood reach out to me and ask me to pass this ordinance, and roughly 30 tell me not to, you know, I see it as a duty as a councilmember to carry out the wishes of the citizens that I represent. I appreciate all of those that have reached out to me, and since the majority that have asked me to help do something is in favor of this ordinance, I will have to vote for it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, as a number of you have been engaged in this process have known, I've been polling different neighborhoods inside the town limits the whole entire time. I say the whole time. All three times that we've passed a requirement. I'm sorry? All right. Yes, ma'am. So, that being said, I've conducted another poll. This time, I've got a number of additional neighborhoods from the first time. These polls are being conducted on Facebook, in-town neighborhoods only. So, I've got a total of 676 folks who have voted inside the town limits. 541 are in favor of a requirement, or 80%. 135 are opposed, or 20%. The neighborhoods with the widest margins are Golden Hills. I see we've got some Golden Hills folks inside here this evening, and that one was 91 in favor, nine opposed as a percentage. We've also got some Wood Creek folks in here this evening. That one was 89% in favor, 11% opposed.
That one was not done on Facebook. That was done by email to all the citizens in Wood Creek.
Correct. And so, as Councilmember Williams stated, I, I mean, I am by no means a medical expert, a doctor. I am very good at car repair, not so much at medical anything. And so, I feel as though it's my responsibility to carry the wishes of the people that I represent, and so, that is the reason that I will be voting the way that I'm voting this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Yes, Ms. Manis.
I would like for Mr. Baker to read the neighborhoods that he did and what the numbers were. I think that's important for the people watching to know that, and the people in the audience.
Yes, ma'am. So, this is as of two days ago when I looked at it. I don't expect many changes, if any. And so, Cherokee Village, where I live, 49 yeses, 14 nos. Coventry and Mallard Lakes share a page, 37 yeses, 15 nos. Golden Hills, 113 yeses, 11 nos.
May I just add that I live in Golden Hills, and I never saw overseas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hawthorne, 27 yeses, 15 nos. Madison Park, 61, 27, Madison Park, 61 yeses, 27 nos. Settlers Point, 53 yeses, 15 nos. Wellesley, 111 yeses, 27 nos. Wood Creek, 90 yeses, 11 nos. In the totals, 541 in favor, 135 opposed. Total of 676 votes. Additionally, I think this is something that's pertinent. When our previous emergency ordinance expired, according to the SED HEC website, there were 218 plus or minus per 100,000. Today, the number is 675 per 100,000. So, since our mask ordinance is required, according to South Carolina DHEC, our numbers have tripled. So, just wanted to put that out there as well.
Very good. Thank you. Excuse me just a minute. There's time for public comment at the end of this meeting. Excuse me. There's time for public comment at the end of this meeting. Yes, ma'am. I'm going to introduce you to one of my police officers, too, so y'all can go ahead and leave. Y'all are not going to listen. I mean, I'm trying to be fair here. You're not going to listen. There's public comment at the end of this meeting. Have a nice night. Have a nice night.
He said they couldn't hear.
Mr. Baker, anything else?
Mr. Baker, what was your question?
What was the total number of votes? And what percentage of the Lexington population did that represent?
Total number of votes was 676, and we can get together afterwards, do some math, and figure out the percentage of population.
I'd know that number, Mr. Mayor. That'd be about 4%.
Thank you.
4% of the people answered your poll. And you're using that as...
Yes, sir. Just a minute. If you want to step to the microphone, you're going to continue to talk.
According to your numbers, that's 4% of the people responded to your poll, 4% of the population. And you're using 4% as a reason to pass this ordinance. Is that correct?
It is one of the many considerations. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
But, Mr. Spat, it was a large percentage in the neighborhood you live in.
Thank you. Is this ordinance just for Wood Creek neighborhood?
No, it is not, but it was a large percentage there because it was sent a different way.
Does this ordinance not apply to all of the town of Lexington?
There are also other people that have sent them out that they've got stacks of emails from that are not included in that.
Immaterial, concerning his point, I was addressing the polling.
But like you said, there's piles of others.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Just quickly, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. McCorns.
60 seconds. I just want to point out, we have to be true to data and statistics, and what our numbers were when this ordinance expired and what they are now is no way correlation does not imply causation. Alabama has the same curve. Everybody in the southeast is spiking right now, and there are multiple states around us who are in the midst of this spike, and people talking about the numbers coming down. They're definitely going to come down, because they've already come down in the Great Plains. They've come down in the Midwest. They're coming down in Western Europe, where entire nations have had mask mandates for almost six months. France, UK, Germany, Spain. So, let's just be careful with our science here, that correlation does not mean causation. And so, if things go down in two weeks, we can't say the mask mandate worked. We need to look on a bigger scale. We'll figure this out in the long run.
Thank you, Mr. McCorns. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker?
Just one final comment. I very much appreciate the comments from Councilmember McCorns and Councilmember Lyle, just regarding how we move forward with this. I would say that whether Lexington is great or not has absolutely nothing to do with a mask requirement. The reasons that we are great are many, and it's not hard to come up with several of them just on the spot. I think about many of the challenges that we've overcome as a community in the past five or six years. A few months ago, I had some prepared remarks speaking about the events in Charleston in 2015, the Thousand Year Flood in 2015, and some of the things that we have overcome together. We will overcome this together as well. And so, definitely appreciate the remarks from the opposition. I definitely am in agreement that this is a great community. I love being here. I love where we're at. I love the people who are here. I appreciate the folks who have come out and who have voiced their opinions, and I anticipate that we will move forward together, and I would make the plea for unity in our community. And I would also offer that division is a choice. And so, you have to make that choice, whether you will be a people divided or not. And that's what I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Very good. We have a motion and a second with the two amendments on the floor. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Guys, have it. Thank you. That concludes our meeting for this evening. Is there any questions from the news media? No? Yes, sir. If you would, please step to the microphone and identify yourself. Are there any public comments tonight regarding tonight's agenda? Anyone else? Yes, please. Step to the microphone, identify yourself, name and address, please.
My name is Angela 143 White Oleander Drive.
Step a little closer. We can't hear you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I moved here from New York recently. I came down here in February and fell in love with the town, thought it was amazing. I moved my four children down here. When my neighbors asked me why I left New York, my two words were Andrew Cuomo, because of government overreach. I have since moved three of my friends into my neighborhood. They love the neighborhood. I run one of the community groups here, and I was not polled. I would like to note, sir, in order to be on your Facebook poll, what do you need to do? Because I live in a neighborhood that I was not polled, and I know a lot of the people in my neighborhood, because we also did a poll, weren't asked. So, if you're going to poll, like this gentleman said, for a 4% population, if you are going to dictate a public health policy, there has to be statistics. So, my question, how many people in Lexington have been sick? How many cases? How many recovered? And how many have died? That is what we should be worrying about tonight.
Ma'am, do you live in the town of Lexington?
No, she does not. She lives in Spring Hill Lake.
I live in Spring Hill Lake.
Okay. So, I think Mr. Baker did Facebook pages from the neighborhoods in the town of Lexington.
Okay, fair enough. But my question was, how do I get polled? You know, if you're going...
You would be represented by the county. The county...
I'd be represented. Okay. Like I said, I'm new here, so...
I mean, we still care about you because you shop here and that kind of stuff, but... And we're happy to have you, but even if we disagree, we're happy to have you.
Right. And that brings it to another point. I'm a mother of four children. Okay? We came down here because of the amazing schools. Lexington won. We tried the virtual learning. I have a six-year-old with a speech impediment and cannot wear a mask. I will not send my six-year-old child to school to read and to learn how to speak, where you need your mouth in order to speak. We have since pulled him from virtual learning, and I am struggling. I'm a struggling mom of four kids, and I'm trying to make this work because of a mask ordinance that has been passed through Lexington One. I'm extremely disappointed. So, ma'am, you also had mentioned that you have a child with special medical needs. Okay? I am also a mother of a special medical needs child. He's had multiple surgeries, has multiple hospitalizations. He requires a daily treatment. In addition, he's having a major surgery in April. I would never ask any person in this room to set their child on fire to keep him warm. It is about critical thinking, and it's about personal responsibility. And I would never ask somebody else to put my child before their personal needs.
So, I want to answer your question about the mask in schools.
Sure.
That is not part of our ordinance.
I'm aware.
That's from the state superintendent of education, who has made the decision that all students in South Carolina will wear a mask.
Right.
So, that's not...
I'm aware it has nothing to do with tonight's meeting and the ordinance. However, the trickle-down of the epidemic failure of the government, saying we are going to overreach and putting a mask where Molly Spearman started it, and then it trickled down to district to district, is how it started. Now, here we are. I will admit, I won't stop, I won't shop at a small business with my four children because I will not comply regardless of your mask ordinance tonight, and that's going to affect small businesses. Okay? In addition, when I am out in public with my child that has special needs, who cannot medically tolerate a mask, I can't tell you how many times I have been passed with rude comments because of that. Does he need to have a display of saying, "I have a child with special medical needs. He cannot medically tolerate a mask." I'm scared to go out by myself with four children for the fear of what other people are going to say to me, because my child cannot wear a mask. We should be an inclusive society. We talk about division tonight. We're a divided country, and this isn't going to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Please, if you would, just state your name and address, full of the record.
Steve Elliott, 713 Oakmead Court in Lexington. First time at one of these things, so thank you all. I brought my daughter here. She's 13. I guess you can kind of see we disagree on the mask thing. But she needs to learn the process.
Y'all still love each other, right?
She still loves me some days. I do have a question, and I need some edification. There was a motion to extend the mask ordinance till some point in May, I believe it was.
May 1st.
Okay. I'm not familiar with how that works, so is it not on the table to be rescinded until May 21st? So, we basically stuck on this thing for five months, no matter what happens?
Yes, sir. No. We did put an end date on it, but if we see that we can rescind it before that date, I'm sure this council will come together and rescind it.
Got you. Okay. I wasn't aware of that sound.
None of us want to wear a mask, but listen, every city around us that is our sister cities has a mask ordinance. Our health professionals are asking us for a mask mandate. Our business professionals are asking us for a mandate. Our schools are asking us to help them with a mask mandate. That's all we did. We came together. We're doing it as a group. We'll get through it as a group. As soon as we get through it and we feel like we can pull it off, we will take it off.
Okay, fair enough. Like or not, I'll have to live with it, but I wasn't sure how it worked as far as.
Yes, sir.
You know, you put a date on something, is it, can we revisit it or are we stuck with it?
So, yeah, no, it will sunset May 1st, if not before. We hope it will sunset before.
That was something I had a problem with, and they assured me that if they started coming down and things started getting better, that we would come back together and take it off. Because I struggled with that.
Thank you all for clarifying.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Elliott. And you're raising a strong-willed woman there. Good for you. Yes, ma'am, please. Name an address for the record.
Monica Breckenridge, 405 Flaxton Court. I want to ask you guys, why is it that you're listening to Dr. Powers when they are directly benefiting financially from what's happening one way or another? The other question I want to ask, I code medical records for a living, which means I code for hospitals from all over the United States. My job depends on patients being at the hospital, so if I have, there's no patients in the hospital, I have no work. I was furloughed during the midst of this pandemic because we didn't have enough patients during this. So when you're talking about Lexington Medical having to hire people to come work for them now, did you ask them if they laid off people and all those people they laid off or furloughed during the time now back full-time? And is that why they're having to hire nurses? There's a lot of things. There's a very myopic view, and people aren't asking other questions. Also, masks may save lives, but you know what really saves lives? Early treatment. Did you guys reach out to Lexington Medical and ask, when a person tests positive from DHEC, are they directed to a doctor to get early treatment?
Wait just a minute. Wait, wait, wait. We'll let you answer as soon as she's finished, one at a time.
So I have been coding ICU patients from Detroit, California, Florida, everywhere. Even with comorbidities, they are recovering if they receive early treatment. Another thing, we don't hear it in the media enough. We hear mask, mask, mask. What we don't hear is who's truly at high risk. And I will tell you, it's diabetics and people with obesity, and this does not get talked about enough. We hear masks, but we don't hear the other side of things. I haven't yet seen a type 1 diabetic in an ICU. I mean, I don't code for all hospitals, but it seems like that doesn't affect them as much. Autoimmune disorders. And you guys can pull up the DHEC comorbidity report. I think they do one weekly, and look at really who's being affected by this and do, you know, some education. And again, I encourage you to reach out to Lexington Medical and ask them, what is happening to the people who are testing positive who go to these test sites? Are they getting immediate treatment? Because usually when I see a really sick patient that I'm coding, they're on day seven from the time they got tested and had no treatment whatsoever, and now their body has exploded. And so why don't we focus on things like that instead of asking everybody to be masked? And are we also addressing the fact that young adults are committing suicide at a higher rate than ever? And it's because of these iatrogenic, it's an iatrogenic effect, meaning you put these measures in place and it's having other side effects that nobody's looking at. And we care for our elderly. We do. But do we not care about anybody else who's affected by these measures that you guys are putting in place? And that includes young people. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Dr. Tucker.
Dr. Tucker, you want to? Can you speak to the mic, please?
I'm sorry. I'm really saddened that people don't believe doctors. I mean, that's what I'm hearing. That is what I'm hearing.
Ma'am.
Everybody just said that for the most part, did you ask them, you know, they're going to profit? And don't get me wrong, your comments are right. We spend more money on healthcare in the United States than any country in the world, or at least a developed country, and we have one of the worst healthcare systems because we're selling health. But anyway, to make a long story short, I'm sorry that you feel that you can't trust us because we are telling you the truth. The mask, if you look, Mr. Carnes, at the data, you're right. They're having high spikes, but their death rate is lower than ours. Alabama, North Carolina, their death rate is almost half ours. So that's what I'm saying. The mask is not perfect. It doesn't keep you completely from getting the virus, but it reduces the amount that you get, your what we call viral load. And the amount of virus then correlates with the severity of the disease. As far as when you, yes, you lost your job. A lot of people were furloughed in South Carolina from healthcare facilities at the very beginning because when we shut down, all the elective cases at all the hospitals were stopped, no elective cases for weeks. So then there was no one in the hospital. You're right. The emergency rooms were, I mean, like, you know, ghost towns. It was crazy. It was scary. But now that we've opened back up, we've opened the floodgates because those numbers are up. Now, it's true with a lot of things that we do that early treatment makes sense, but considering that the majority of people actually do very well with this. You don't want steroids and antibodies given to you if you don't need them. So we do not admit everybody that causes, if we couldn't admit everybody to the hospital and give them treatment. Right, right. Still, you couldn't do that outpatient. I mean, you can do steroids. You can do oral steroids, and you can give them a loading. I am betting you can't bring them in and everybody expect to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on somebody that may never need it. Does that make sense? Because antibodies cost a lot of money. So you say no. You say we should give everybody steroids if they test positive?
Thank you very much, Dr. Tucker. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Please understand, I'm not trying to make light of a situation, but I have a question for Councilmember Lyle as the only attorney in the group. As the ordinance reads, am I in compliance?
I'd have to read the ordinance. I'm going to give you the lawyerly answer. I'm going to need to read it.
You haven't read the ordinance?
No, I have. I've not read it in contemplation.
The ordinance says face mask.
It was amended for CDC guidelines.
Or the mask was amended to CDC guidelines.
Okay, the CDC guidelines, and you were contrary about this, specifically say fabric mask.
My husband also just said, he sent me something from the CDC that says cloth.
Cloth.
Multi-layer cloth, which they, I mean, not cloth, paper, which these are. And the doctor is sitting there shaking her.
I also sent you the link that said it's fabric and washable.
Let me tell you what, we'll get a clarification tomorrow from CDC on that, okay?
Very good. Thank you.
But I want to make one more point, please. I'm not against people wearing masks. COVID, bad. Being healthy, good. I get all that. My wife and I have three or four, maybe five of the contributing factors toward COVID. We're going to wear masks. My complaint is that the town of Lexington, I don't know if you're trying to be like Columbia or what, passing a law is silly because nobody's going to follow the law if they don't want to. You can't make them follow the law. Rather, the better leadership advantage would be to issue an advisory. Suggest, strongly suggest that the citizenry and visitors to the town follow these guidelines with specificity. Exactly what kind of mask you're talking about, washing hands and that sort of thing. But a law is just, as I said before, it's faux leadership. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to clarify for one to Ms. Hazel Livingston, who she and I have had many conversations. I specifically in my speech tonight made it clear that she did not, according to her, and I'm taking her word for it. She gave the doctor's testimony to the council. She did not talk to Brent Powers, anybody at the hospital. That further proves that this council, someone, or maybe more than one, they're dirty. To contact a hospital official, and that hospital official, Brent Powers, who is also corrupt, to try to suppress someone's free speech of giving an opinion is all anyone needs to know about this virus. And with all due respect to you, ma'am, there are many doctors, actually, there are more doctors here tonight in favor and against the mandate than there were in favor of it. And like I made the point in my speech, you're not in danger of being doxxed, of becoming a target because you're following the narrative. Many doctors come to me privately, which is why they wanted to go to Hazel and the council people privately because there hasn't been about the same thing. They have family that they need to take care of. And I'd just like to say that I'm not in here to get into a tit-for-tat about which side cares about the community more. But coming off of what Ms. Hazel said about loving thy neighbor, I do love my neighbor and I love my community, which is why I'm here tonight to fight for their freedoms. Because we all know that if you give the government an inch, they're going to take a mile. Now it's the mask mandate, the lockdowns, which are killing small businesses. They're putting families on welfare. They're, it's such a detriment to our economy that it's unfathomable, far worse than whatever this virus can do to this nation. First is the mask, next will be the vaccine, who knows what? It's a slippery slope, and I'm here to protect their freedoms because as can be seen, the data at best is inconclusive. And everyone in favor of the mandate, all they had was signaling their virtue and for insinuating aspersions on others and their care for their community. And that is not what we pass policy, that is not how we pass policy. And if this trend line continues, you will continue to see more and more overreach and aggression as we even saw here tonight in this room. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir, Mr. Baker. Mr. Carnes, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Carnes, before you do that, I'd like to address her. I would also like to say that the doctor said he was not worried about any repercussions if it got back because he had had a conversation with infectious disease. I did not talk to Brent Powers, but.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lyle.
I don't know that this is the appropriate venue for all this hearsay, saying all these outside conversations. I don't think this is appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Carnes called for the question. Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Lyle, second's motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We are adjourned.